Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call to order the October 28, 2013, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. And as usual, we begin with a pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kalin?
Here.
Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is absent. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Charter?
Here.
Mayor Bruck. Mayor Bruck is absent. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. I understand that the mayor is absent due to a death in his family in California, so that's the reason that he's not here tonight. I'm sure he would be here if he possibly could. We have no validation of a notice of special meeting. I entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, proclamations. I don't think we have any. Oath of office to new board or commission members. Are there anyone here for that? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is receipt of public comments. Before I do, I want to recognize, first of all, Scout Post 1130. Did I get the number right? Great. Well, you're very much welcome here, and I welcome all of our citizens here. First item on the agenda under public comments will here frankly celebrate the EPA Green Community Challenge recognition, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder, members of council. We are very proud of the fact that the city is the first community and first locality in Virginia to meet the Green Power Community Challenge that is sponsored by the Environmental Protection Agency. And we're here tonight to celebrate that achievement. It was a community-wide achievement with our business leaders, our residences, and the city government all chipping in to purchase their electric power from renewable sources. And we hit the threshold of 3 percent of the electricity purchased throughout the city amongst all of our customer base is now purchased from sustainable and renewable sources. And we're the first community in Virginia to be recognized for this. And so it's a happy occasion, and I would like to invite Brenda Creel and other members of the team to come forward and speak to this accomplishment. We also have our guests from the EPA to describe the achievement, what we've accomplished, and where we'll be going from here. Brenda.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased this evening to have with me to speak to this celebration Blaine Collinson. He is the director of the Green Power Partnership, the EPA's Green Power Partnership. He's going to kick off our comments this evening. And then Tim Stevens, the Chair of the city's Environmental Services Council, has some remarks.
Thank you. I will be uncharacteristically brief. As you noted, this is the first community in the entire Commonwealth to take this on and to hit these benchmarks. We were chatting a little bit before the meeting started, and the Green Power Community element of the program, the Green Power Partnership, which has more than 1,500 corporate and institutional and small business partners from around the U.S. economy. It's an amazing roster of entities, by the way. It's worth taking a look at the list. The community piece started with Moab, Utah, which is actually about the size of this room, right? It's out there in Red Rock Country. And I was sure that the whole community piece was a reflection of a colleague of mine wanting to hang out in Red Rock Country and have a guide take him around for free, right? And so they cooked up this little thing. All right, that's cute and terrific, you know, well done. That'll die on the vine, and we can all get back to our primary focus. Not so. It's been amazing. We have green power communities that are smaller than Falls Church. We have some that have, I think, only 300 residents. We have green power communities that include Washington, D.C., which is, of course, the capital of the entire free world. The city of Philadelphia is a green power community. And one of the exciting things -- it is easy, as a professional environmentalist, which is what I am, to get a little bit tired, frustrated, right? The environmental work can be a slog. And to look at community efforts like this and to see multiple sectors coming together and, as you say, chipping away at this and all contributing and hitting a benchmark and saying, "Let's figure it out." Right? Here we go. And what's possible is really rewarding and fun and encouraging. And I know, I know very well, that there is at least one other local jurisdiction slightly east of here in Virginia that has been watching this very carefully. They would love to have been first. I think they will be pleased to be on the list following your example. So congratulations, and thank you very much.[354.69][354.69](applause) It was about a year ago when a small group of us was asked to take a look at this EPA Green Power program and advise the council whether or not we should pursue it. And at the time, we had just learned that it wasn't going to be possible for us to pursue a community energy plan. Still, we wanted to find some activity that could engage our residents and our businesses to do something more about renewable energy. And so it was very timely that the EPA program came to our attention. And of course, we said, "Yes, this is something that we should pursue." As Blaine mentioned, our target is 3 percent. And that's 3 percent of the total energy in Falls Church, our businesses, our residents, nonprofits, and so forth. And we do have a few homes and businesses that produce renewable energy from solar panels, but that's just very few. Most of the energy that we got that merited us the award came from renewable energy certificates, or RECs. And RECs do something important. They put a value on a key characteristic of renewable energy, and that's the fact that it doesn't produce any greenhouse gas emissions, which disrupt our climate. And so because of that, it becomes a very valuable thing towards, like I say, towards the award. Traditional cost accounting doesn't do anything like that. It treats all sources of energy equal, as if global warming doesn't exist. So when we buy these renewable energy certificates, we channel money to the producers of renewable energy. And so, in effect, it sends a marketplace signal for them to produce more renewable energy. So 3 percent is not a huge number, but it's a good start. And one of the reasons why we wanted to pursue this is because we thought we could use this award to give ourselves new goals. Imagine putting solar panels on our schools and using them to teach our students about renewable energy. Now, even in a state like Virginia, where it's very difficult to make progress on renewable energy, there are more things that we can do to pursue it if we want to. And so because of all of this, I want to say thanks to our businesses, our residences, our civic organizations such as BPIS. They were very instrumental in helping this effort along. And so Falls Church, enjoy being called an EPA Green Power Community.[507.09][507.09](applause)
This is a very exciting achievement, and it is the result of a tremendous collaborative effort. And we have a big team to thank. So I'm going to go through my list of folks to thank, and at the end, ask everyone to stand, and then we'll join the council for a photo. Our EPA partners, Mr. Collison and Molly Lemon with the Green Power Partnership, have provided technical assistance and advice and encouragement. We thank the Falls Church Environmental Services Council. Tim Stevens, in particular, as Chair, has been very active in the community outreach for this project. Dominion Virginia Power, we thank DVP and Three Degrees, its contractor, for its green power program. They have been working with the city since this effort kicked off last year, and they've provided resources and materials and staffing and have engaged in a lot of the community and business outreach associated with this effort. We thank Travis Cutler with the DVP and Courtney Gilbert with Three Degrees, Ryan Link, Julia Markhart, and Betsy Stewart. And finally, we thank the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, Sally Cole, the Executive Director, and Christopher Bergen, the Chair of the Board. They allowed us to time at a membership luncheon and also at a board meeting, so we appreciate our partner's help. We'd also like to recognize the businesses and organizations that have purchased green power. These include Crabtree &amp; Company, Energy Shift, Giant, Urban Lifestyle, Hilton Garden Inn of Falls Church, JDM Associates, Staples, Starbucks, Vipus, and The Young Group. All of these businesses and organizations have purchased RECs toward the project. We also thank the 163 residential households in Falls Church that participated in DVP's green power program or purchased RECs through other aggregators such as Clean Currents, Renewable Choice Energy, and Wind Current. In addition to the purchase of green power, we have residents and businesses and organizations which actually generate solar power here in the city. So we were very pleased to have Clarion Dawn's Restaurant participate in the project. We have Walter and Carol Mallory here with us this evening. They're residents who have a solar installation in their home. And soon to be added to the roster is the Easter Seals facility. I would be remiss if I did not thank the staff who've been involved in the project as well. I'd like to thank Ken Lasso. He's been the administrative support, the website support for the project, our staff green team, Office of Communications, the manager and assistant city manager. So congratulations to everyone who made this a successful effort. These two signs are available to the city. We hope to install those at our gateways. And so we thank everyone and celebrate this success.[732.04][732.04](applause)
And if I could just add to those thanks, a very big thank you to Brenda Creel, who, along with Ken Lasso, were great salespeople for this program. And I don't think it would have happened without your tireless efforts to convene the right people, bring the right people together, and exert the leadership throughout the city to help push us over the threshold and make this happen. So thank you.
So if folks would stand that have been participants in our program, and then we did a --
What I'd like to do is invite everyone to come on up for a group photo, please. Everyone who wants to and participated in the program in one way or another, please come up.
Put the sign in front of the table?
Yeah, maybe in the front. Thanks.
Let's see if it'll work.
Come on back. How do you want to do it? No. Put that in the front, and then have everybody come back here. Yeah.
Everybody, go on. Don't be shy. And then, once you're there, I'm going to bring you a sign.[824.04][824.04](laughing)
Yeah, can we get close up, like, not overflowing beyond the table, so we can fit this big group in?
You can do two. Do doubles.
Can you start a second row? These folks aren't going to make it in. Thank you, guys.
There we go.
Like above the table?
Yep, he's nice and tall, so we got him. All right. One, two, three.
Yes. Do you have a number where it can reach you?
Yeah.
Well, this is a great example of a citizen-driven, city-supported effort, and I want to thank everyone personally for your work on this. I want to recognize other members of council who would like to make some comments. Councilmember Berry?
The room is emptying.[935.25][935.25](laughing)
Pure coincidence.
Yeah, it's all about, yeah, right. It's all about the timing. But I did want to say I've had the privilege of serving on council and serving as liaison to a number of councils committees on the environment, climate, et cetera. And of course, the Green Power Community designation is, you know, is extraordinary. But it is really only one of a number of many important and visionary decisions by city leadership and staff over the years. And this city council really is part of that spectrum. We are only part of a longer process that was established by councils before us, and I hope councils after us. Our recycling rate is, as you know, is, you know, is high at, well, I think we got bumped off the list this year, but was the highest in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Our work on stormwater, our work on energy, our work on tree canopies, et cetera. It just is all part of, I think, the city's vision and mission, and I certainly hope that the city takes great pride, as its residents should, in making these statements and sort of walking the walk and talking the talk. And certainly, we hope city councils in the future continue to embrace this commitment.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make any comments? Before the Lasso family leaves, I have to recognize that Ken Lasso is the latest generation carrying on the tradition of leadership on the part of the entire Lasso-Hennberg family. So thank you all very much for that, Ken. Thank you. Thanks to everyone involved. Well done. Councilmember Duncan?
Just one question. I just have to ask, what would that other community be that was in the running?
It sounds like --
Does it sound like F uh something? Does it? Any hints? Do I get any answer? Can the record reflect an answer to the question? Wow, everybody's so polite. Okay. Well, we'll keep in that vein. I just wanted, obviously, many people deserve credit. I wanted to single out Tim Stevens, who, in my time on council, I've learned that he's associated with, if he's associated with it, it's a good thing to be informed about, and we just appreciate all his effort across a broad range of issues. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.[1088.04][1088.04](applause) We have another, is it Explorer Post with us this evening? I know we have Troop 1130. Do we have additional scouts here, or are you a part of 1130?
We have a few scouts from 895 as well.
895? Great. Welcome. Thanks for being here. Continuing with our public comment session, we have one speaker slip from Barbara Cram representing Falls Church Arts. Barbara?
Good evening, council and city staff and city manager and city attorney. I'd like to thank, the Green City thing is really a wonderful opening to how wonderful it is to live in a city that collaborates across channels in so many different ways, and it is a wonderful community to be part of. And one of the things that I'm here for tonight was to thank council and personally give you the hot-off-the-press catalog, which actually came the day after I made the last presentation two weeks ago. We have, this is now online on our city Falls Church Arts website, which is all-new. And never having built a website before, it was a lot of work, then a great learning experience. And we're now working on the catch website, which we hope to have done by the middle of this coming month. So I wanted to thank you all for your vision and your support of the arts, theater, culture, and history in the city of Falls Church. I think the last two years since we were designated by the state of Virginia as one of the eight test communities to do an arts and cultural district, I think we've done a lot of positive things that have really helped us increase the visibility and extension of education to all our citizens, whether it's the Civil War Trails or the Tenner Hill African-American Heritage Trail, things like the Reserve at Tenner Hill, Art Space, and other activities in town like Watch Night, which is coming up, and all the things that make our town special. And I think it's really something that takes a lot of energy to keep it going, but the more we move, the more we pick up, just like a snowball. And it's a wonderful feeling to be part of it, and I want to just hand these to you and thank you for all of your help and your vision.
I think Barbara deserves a round of applause as well.[1235.04][1235.04](applause) Thank you so much, Barbara, and Falls Church Arts. You really do a lot for our community.[1244.25][1244.25](end of transcript) Does anyone else wish to address us on topics not on the agenda? Okay, that's seeing none. I'll move right on to summary of written comments. Madam Clerk?
Counsel, I'll quickly go through your summary. Everything except one has to do with items on the agenda. Under TO 13-21 regarding assisted living, Mike Novatny, the EDA Chair, said the EDA Board unanimously supported removing assisted living as a by right use, as well as many others they listed in their memo of October 23rd. They also recommended making the same changes in the B2, B3, T1, and T2 districts. And the EPA Board also recommended, by a vote of four to two, that the proposed ordinance not apply to any pending applications and applications filed within six months prior to the approval of the ordinance. For TO 13-22 regarding the 20-foot setback, Mr. Novatny again said the EDA Board unanimously supported approval of the ordinance, and they further suggested that a 20-foot frontyard setback be required throughout the entire B2 downtown district. For TO 13-18, the stormwater ordinance, Michael Conley, President of Vipus, said the Vipus Board strongly urged the council to retain the 35 percent impervious surface limit in the code until alternatives were clear, in place, and deemed to be equally effective. And then they went on to explain in greater detail the reasons to support that position. For TO 13-27 regarding the mobile food carts, Captain Howard Studley at 304 Bishop's Court, as an individual citizen, expressed his opposition to having mobile food vendors in the city because it reminded him of Washington, D.C. And you also received a copy from the Winter Hill Community Association Board of their letter to Rushmore Properties expressing their concerns and desires regarding the project at 301 West Broad Street. Those are your comments.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, council requests. Are there any this evening? Okay, I see none. Moving right along, report of the city manager to council. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder, members of council. There's two things I'd like to report on. Both may take up a decent amount of time. So one of them is to respond to the council request for an update on the status of public works projects that are going across the city. And I've prepared a written report that I can briefly summarize. And we're trying to use this as a template to get information out to the public, so that the public that's watching these capital projects would like to know what their status is, can easily find that information. And so we're working more in that direction, and I can provide a summary of that. But before I go through a quick summary of those projects, if I could report on the second item, which is a report on parking enforcement activity in the city, and this is a council request as well, and I'd like to invite Police Chief Mary Gavin to come forward to the podium to provide the council with a brief report and hit some of the key things that we'd like to communicate about our parking enforcement in the city and respond to questions on that. And then, depending on how much time that takes, we'll gauge how much detail we'll go in on the public works projects. Chief Gavin?
Good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the parking enforcement function here in the city and how it speaks to the importance of public safety and why it's a priority. First of all, parking in every and all communities, may it be residential or in the business communities, is a quality of life issue. We've seen that in years past with the towing ordinance that we went through for many, many weeks. But for this community and the changing landscape with the increased population, with the multi-use type buildings, with the high rises that are coming in, I think what you're going to find is parking is going to be ever so challenging. A year to this week, we hired a parking enforcement officer. He has, in this past year, written over 3,260 tickets, which is probably tenfold to any other parking enforcement officer that we've had in the past. And with the number of enforcement, what you're going to have is a number of challenges, and you're going to have a number of complaints. There are going to be mistakes. I encourage each and every person that has a concern or complaint is to forward them to the police department. We'll talk about process here in a minute. But what we do have is we have a parking enforcement officer that is working very hard. He's a good, efficient employee. We're paying about $26,000. He's a part-time employee. He's written 3,600, over 3,600 tickets. He's collected in that about $150,000 worth of revenue in this year alone. And there's about $90,000 that's still outstanding on those tickets that have been written. So he's doing a very efficient job, and I think what he's doing is preparing a community for this growth that's going to come, because I think what you're going to find with the commercial growth in the city and with residential, that marriage is going to be very difficult because there's going to be a lot of people coming into the city expecting to park, and expecting to park either in lots or in neighborhoods. And with a fairly efficient parking enforcement officer, I think what you're going to find is residents are going to find that their best interests are going to be thought of first. I have a breakdown of the data of the parking tickets he has issued throughout this year, and I would provide that to you a little later. I don't want to get into that. But let me just talk about parking process in itself. What happens is the officer goes out and writes a ticket. With that ticket is put on to the windshield or attached to the vehicle. On the back of the ticket, there are instructions as to how to resolve a ticket. If the citizens receive a ticket, they can pay this without contesting it to the treasurer's office, or they can contest the ticket by going up to the clerk's office and getting a court date. If they choose to bring a complaint to the police department, there are various ways that they could do that. But what I would encourage them to do, if they went on to the city website and they pulled up the police department's website, they're going to see a police email. I welcome all and each complaint. I, myself, and a couple of our supervisors have gone to the houses of those people with these complaints and tried to resolve some of them. We've gone to some of the houses with DPW and tried to resolve some of the traffic engineering type things to assist with, one, adding more parking spaces, and unfortunately, in some areas, trying deleting some parking spaces because of vision and the types of things that we need to keep as a priority in public safety. But the message to the community is this, is, you know, parking is very challenging. We understand it's a quality of life issue. Our priority is to ensure that the residents have their parking, that it's reasonable. If they have a complaint, I welcome them to write us and tell us what their complaint is. We will probably call them back, either personal or email them, or even make a visit to the house, and we've done all of those, to ensure that we're doing the right thing. And I welcome any concerns or questions that you all may have.
Thank you very much for this report. Are there questions? Yes, Councilmember Kalin?
Just a very particular question. In a situation where the person, the parking officer is about to write a ticket or just beginning, and the person comes out to move the car, are you going to give that person a ticket? That happened to me in Arlington, and I sent them a letter, and they apologized profusely, but it was too late, the ticket had already been issued. What are you going to do when that happens?
You know, discretion's the live blood of this profession. I would hope that my officer would see that you're going to move the car, if that's compliance, and move on, not give you the ticket. That would be my wishes of him, and, you know, if you want me to convey that, I certainly will. But I can't speak to Arlington.
I didn't.
Yeah. Yep.
Councilmember Duncan?
Just three quick thoughts. I think a more aggressive parking regime is acceptable, and as you say, inevitable as we become more urbanized. as we become more urbanized. I do think it should be accompanied by equally aggressive public information campaigns, so that citizens know, you know, there's a new guy on the beat, and he's working hard to do his job. And the information that you gave us there about the email, I think, is a good thing to know. I guess I should have known that, but I didn't. Be helpful, I think, for us to go through the office communications and spread the word via Facebook and website and so forth, maybe some pictures showing, you know, him hard at work, just to grab people's attention that this is happening. Second, we have a more aggressive regime, but as you drive around town, you still see, we look fairly suburban, you know? There's not any parking meters, that I know of. There are not very many lines painted on the street to kind of indicate, don't park here, do park here. I guess I would ask something, I think Vice Mayor Snyder has asked before, if we might look at some demonstration project to stripe parking spaces, particularly along Park Avenue near where Mr. Kaylin lives, where sometimes you see, you know, three cars taking the space of five. And I think this would help address a shortage of parking and perhaps alleviate some of the need for some of the tickets that are distributed. I think those are the main things I wanted to convey. Thanks.
Thank you, my Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Carter?
Yes, I've got a mixture of comments and questions. One, starting with a question, how do you tell if somebody's been there for, let's say, two hours or more? Does somebody put a chalk mark on the tire? Is that what they do?
Yes, there's chalk marked tire.
Okay. I guess I'd like to echo what I think was implied in Mr. Duncan's comment, that I think as a city, we're probably going to need to move to meters more and more, because parking's going to become more of a challenge, and we want to make sure there is adequate parking, that people don't, you know, hog up parking for four or five hours. I know the person can't make the rounds, but in so much time, and so, even if he was there exactly two hours, there's another place where somebody may be three or four hours. So, I think we ought as a city to consider more and more parking. I'd like us to try to also maximize the amount of on-street parking. You know, I walk, my kids are school every day, and I walk through a lot of on-street parking, and I see some of this, of course, is safety-related, but the distance between the curb and the first parking space and entrances and the like. I know there's issues about visibility and sight distance and the like, but I think a lot of the traffic is fairly slow-moving, and I wonder if we could find a way to try to, you know, maybe increase the amount of on-street parking, particularly as relates to or nearby commercial areas, because it's so critical to our businesses that there is enough parking to support retail. People don't want to go in garages, they don't want to park four blocks away, and so, it really is, I think, central to our business success. Let me ask you, in the appeals, you said, does it go to court? Is that where an appeal would lie? If someone says, hey, I shouldn't have got this $50 ticket, do you have to go sit through three hours of court and generalist court on Wednesdays?
Typically, that's how it works, is they would either pay the ticket and/or get a court date through the Clerk's Office and go to court.
I have to say, I mean, having sat through generalist court as an attorney, not as a criminal, I have, it's a long wait, and I have to say, whether somebody's guilty or innocent, it's going to discourage everybody. I mean, who wants to spend, or who can spend, three hours in court over, I don't know what the fines are, thankfully, I haven't had a ticket in the city, but a $50 ticket? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. To my recollection, the one ticket I have appealed in my life, it went through an administrative process. Maybe I could ask our city attorneys, is it possible we could implement an administrative process, at least initially, for the first review of tickets, so people don't need to spend, you know, half a day in court over a $50 fine?
I'll have to look into that, Mr. Carter. I can certainly report out at the next council meeting.
I mean, I think that would be advisable, so that people have a right to get, you know, quote, "due process" without being so discouraged by, you know, half a day through the line of folks, and it is a big line on Wednesdays here, to challenge a, you know, parking ticket. I think it would be good to consider that.
I know there are surrounding jurisdictions, we have some model that they have parking abrogation offices. They have gone as far as going with that model, and then they have abolished that model as well, abandoned that model. I think Arlington had it at one point, and then they got rid of it. I believe Alexandria still has it.
Yeah, I just think that it's one of those things where you don't even want to fight it. I mean, whether it was a valid ticket or not, the idea of sitting around for four hours to get your day in court just seems excessive, and I would hope that we could try to figure out a way, at least as a preliminary matter, where someone could bring the case before someone without so much effort, or do it in writing, or some other means, at least as an initial cut on that. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Chief, I'd add two more. One of the scenarios that I've heard, as I've been walking around the city, is people pull into a space, I think she said it was a handicapped space, she was literally there, parking enforcement officer saw her and gave her a ticket, a $500 ticket, as opposed to giving her a warning. And that citizen felt that was a bit excessive, that they could have taken the warning and that would have made the point. So, again, handicap parking spaces is a significant issue, so I wanted to bring that scenario to your attention. The other one that I've gotten is cars that are owned by people in the city with city tax stickers on them, being ticketed for being parked out front of their homes for more than three days, or whatever the ordinance reads. That seemed to me an excessive scenario as well. So, I don't know if that requires a change in ordinance, but that was another scenario that I've heard.
I welcome any of those complaints on the website. If they want to give us direct email, we can sit down and talk about the specifics of each and every complaint, but without that, I don't have much to comment on.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks for the work of the officer. I think you've heard, I think we've all picked up some issues the community has, and we'd like to work through them, so we have a rule of reason as well as good enforcement. So, thanks very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
And before I go to the second part of my presentation, I just want to thank the chief for her approach on this, and also reiterate what the vice mayor just said. We have a parking enforcement officer that is very straightforward and hardworking, and the best thing we can do is, A, listen to the public, and if there's other administrative support, we can provide for the efficient administration of parking enforcement. That's, you know, that's what we need to do. But our enforcement officer is doing a very good job. We just need to make sure the systems are there to back them up, and make sure we're listening to the public and serving the public well. With respect to public works projects underway, we have a report here that's back on the table, and the council has it at the dais as well, and it provides just a dashboard of projects that are underway, and I'll just touch on a few that are of the higher-profile projects with a summary of their status. And the question came up specifically on projects that are in the South Washington Street area. That is an area that is in much need of public investment and improvements, and we're getting that now, both through public investment and significant private investment as well. Notably, in South Washington Street, we have the Intermodal Transit Plaza at Hillwood and South Washington Street, which will realign the intersection at that intersection, add pedestrian crossings, and better curb or sidewalk access in the vicinity of that intersection. And we have in total $2 million of state and federal funding, and $590,000 in state six-year improvement monies for some of the signal improvements that we have for the whole South Washington Street corridor. Because we are using state and federal money, the design process and the administration is intensive, but we're at 30% design for the Intermodal Station right now. We've had public input meetings on the conceptual design, and we anticipate that the final designs will be completed this coming summer, and construction to begin in the fall of 2014 on the Intermodal Plaza and those associated improvements. The privately funded improvements that are underway or completed in South Washington Street, at 308 South Washington Street, the new brick sidewalks and landscaping planners in the public right-of-way were done by the Young Group as part of their refurbishment of the shopping center, and that work is complete, and a major upgrade for that area. And then, of course, at the Reserve at Tenner Hill, we'll have brick sidewalks and streetscape, as well as a new signal at Tenner Hill Road and Washington Street. The site plan was approved by the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and we expect construction over the next coming two years, with the streetscape improvements really being the last thing that will be installed as part of the Reserve at Tenner Hill. At council's next meeting, we will have a lease agreement for the Tenner Hill historic site. We're very excited about our progress on this project, which is undertaken in coordination with the Tenner Hill Heritage Foundation, the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and Fairfax County. And so, we'll be talking about that in more depth at your next meeting, and talk about the timeline for when that project will move forward. For stormwater projects in the vicinity, we have a major repair to stormwater at the 100 block of West Broad Street, and that will involve repairing a collapsed pipe at the BB&amp;T Bank site. We will also do detention there, so we don't increase flooding in the South Washington Street area. In the Commercial District, right on Douglas Avenue, which is an area where we have recurring flooding, we're in preliminary engineering to detain and increase conveyance for stormwater to prevent flooding, which occurs on an annual basis at the Tower Shopping Center. So, we're in preliminary engineering for both of those two projects right now. Citywide, just some of the higher-profile projects, the West Broad and Pennsylvania Avenue Signal, that is on the council's agenda tonight for contract approval with Fort Myers Construction. And so, with that contract signed, they will place all of their orders, and we believe that that work will be completed in June 2014. That's about a $400,000 project, when you include the sidewalk improvements that will be in the vicinity of that new signal at West Broad and Pennsylvania. We have two Safe Roots to Schools projects that are in preliminary engineering right now, and one of them is on Northwest Street, and we'll have a community meeting on November 16th to review two options for sidewalk improvements on Northwest Street. And also, on the 16th, we'll have a neighborhood meeting on the Roosevelt Avenue intersection and sidewalk improvements to install a sidewalk on Roosevelt in the area in front of the Oakwood Cemetery, along the whole stretch of that road. So, that's just a brief overview of some of the projects that we do get questions on. We have a more comprehensive report on the status of a whole host of projects that are out in the community for transportation and stormwater improvements, but I just wanted to let council be aware of that that is a resource that we have, and let the community be aware as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Other comments? Yes, Councilmember Kayla?
I have a question. Who's the individual staff member that's responsible for overseeing that each and every project is properly executed, that what we pay for, we actually delivered, was actually delivered, and at the quality that was expected?
Well, when you look at this dashboard, you see that our project manager, we have a very small staff, so for all of the transportation projects, Kirsten Muntz will be overseeing those projects. And in our stormwater projects, Jason Woodstrom will be overseeing all those projects. And so, you know, that's one of our principal challenges, and the city council, really over the past three, four years, has made the restoration of our capital improvements program a very high priority, and has assigned funding to accomplish these capital projects. We do have a lot of them underway, and our big challenge is making sure that they're administered effectively.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kayla?
Yeah, I actually knew the answer to that. The point was, is that we don't really have something like what we've been talking about before, an internal order, one individual who's in charge of doing, for consistency across projects, et cetera, et cetera. And as we expand, we have more and more individual capital projects. The need to have some sort of consistency and oversight, not divided up amongst staff that is working full-time and really doesn't probably have a lot of extra energy or resources to double-check, someone who is dedicated to that. Because as you read in newspapers all the time, Wyatt, there is always issues of misspent money, embezzlements, et cetera, et cetera, not by the staff necessarily, but it's very hard if there aren't people that are actually assigned that responsibility, to follow all of the projects and all of the issues that come up with, especially when you have so many different ones that you're executing at the same time. So, that's just a plug for that position.
Thank you, Councilmember Kayla. Councilmember Duncan?
I'd just like to thank Councilmember Kayla for bringing that concern up, which he's brought up before, and would like to hear more about that in the coming weeks and months, as we talk about the budget for staffing. Question that's in my mind is, we are thin, and when we're thin, we have a lot to do. Is it a tough choice that we have to make, to have somebody monitoring, or, you know, do we need to spend that staff position actually doing the work rather than monitoring the work? I mean, it's not a, shouldn't be an either-or, but in some cases, it may be. Anyway, I just wanted to put that thought out there. The other point is, again, just a presentation, is it possible, without much expense or effort, to plot this information that's in text form on a map of the city, so that when you swept your mouse over it, it would show, you know, here is what's happening in your end of town? I think Vice Mayor Snyder has brought up, you know, people just not aware of a lot that's going on. Is that hard to do for you all?
We're working to develop that, so we've got some content here, but the presentation isn't quite as user-friendly as we want it to be, and a map of the city is under development right now.
Great, okay. The last question was, maybe it's just because I know folks who live on Hillwood and read the blogs, but I somehow perceive that concerns about stormwater on and in the near vicinity of Hillwood Avenue are perhaps more intense than anywhere in the city. Maybe it's not for tonight's discussion, but just, I feel like I'm aware of that, and I'm sure you all are too. I wonder if we could help give people information about where the Hillwood Avenue projects fall on the priority scale.
Well, our guide for their prioritization of projects is the watershed management plan, and so, let me get that out to the council as well, and we can talk about that with that list of projects in front of us.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Carter?
Sure, this is a question, it's more a comment. I'm not sure this is even the right time to make it, but I'll make it anyway. It deals with public improvements and the like, and I just wanted to throw out the idea of the city adopting a policy to try to encourage redevelopment, even by right redevelopment, by essentially, in some ways, partnering with developers who are doing, for example, by right development, to help beautify the streetscape around a particular development, kind of above and beyond what the developer's required to do. For example, I think it was last week, or maybe two weeks ago, we heard about a medical office that was spending several million dollars in the city, an investment in the city, to upgrade their building, they granted the city easements, and they were making some improvements around their building. But I wonder if, as a city, as a way to encourage that kind of development, we could consider using those as priority areas where we would put in, for example, we'd pay the price of above and beyond what the developer is required to do by maybe adding street lighting or street trees, or other things in that area, to really kind of give some more bang to the buck for what is happening, as a way to encourage redevelopment in areas. So, just a thought, but I think it does tie in with our discussion of public improvements and the like the city's doing. So, I'd like to throw that out and maybe give some consideration, or staff to give some consideration to a policy of some sort along those lines, to see if we can find a way to encourage redevelopment in these areas that may not go by special exception, but in fact, may be redeveloped by right as a way to encourage that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Going back to the list, this is a very impressive list of basic infrastructure projects. So, for those who feel that we're not doing enough, this list is significant for a small city. And the thing is, when it's scattered among different budget documents, I don't think people really understand the scope of transportation, streetscape, stormwater, and other related infrastructure projects. I did have a speaker slip from Robert Young. We've sort of passed the general citizen comment period, but I don't have a problem. Would people mind if we change our rules and accept a comment from Mr. Young? Mr. Young, come on, come forward. I think this comment came up after Councilmember Carter's comment, perhaps, but go ahead, Mr. Young, thank you.
I wanted to comment when the South Washington streetscape issue comes.
Oh, you did?
Forward later.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. We'll take the comment then. Thanks a lot. Scouts, thank you very much for being here. Thanks. Okay. Again, though, I just want to emphasize how impressive this list is and thank the city staff for working through this, and we've got some good ideas going forward in terms of management and also communication to the public. So we'll take all that under advisement. Thanks. Mr. City Manager, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thanks very much. Now we move on to business on the agenda. Second readings of ordinances and other items requiring public hearings. And Madam Clerk, will you read the first item?
First item before you is TO-13-18, ordinance to create Chapter 35 Stormwater Article 1, Stormwater Management of the Falls Church City Code, to clarify and reorganize existing stormwater management regulation, to add new language required by the state of Virginia.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager.
Just very briefly, this was advertised to be heard tonight, but we asked that the council defer it to the meeting on November 21st. And there is a memo that provides an update as to where we are with the development of this ordinance, but no action is requested tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. --
And so what is requested is a motion to defer this item to November 21st.
Okay, I would ask that a motion be put forward on that, motion to defer.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to defer TO-13-18
To the, November 25th.
To November 25th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks very much. Councilmember questions, comments?
Let's ask.
Okay, there being none right now, we'll open this matter to the public. I have no speaker slips on this particular item. Does any member of the public wish to address this? Now, the important thing to keep in mind is that this is a very important initiative, and there are some changes from the original version. Do you want to summarize those very quickly, Mr. City Manager, or we have the document in front of us, if that's sufficient for the council?
I do.
Okay, we've got it in front of us. Any questions for the City Manager? All right, let me ask again, and does any member of the public wish to address us on this item? Yes, Mr. Young? Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Robert Young. My address is 608 Timber Lane. I would like to strongly support the staff proposal on stormwater management. I've spent a great deal of time discussing it with staff and examining what they propose. And while there are misconceptions all around the city with respect to these kinds of technical issues, I believe the staff has it exactly right in this case. I don't always say that, but I'll say that in this case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take that. Let me just finish up. Anyone else from the public wish to address us on this item? Okay, there being none, we close the public hearing part on this item. Madam Clerk, is there anything in writing on this item? Clerk indicates no. We'll now open it to council again. Councilmember Kaylin?
Please just remind us why the deferment is required.
There's two reasons. One, because it is a zoning amendment, it needed to have a hearing before the Planning Commission, and we had our advertising wrong on that. Secondly, more substantively, we are still working with the Planning Commission on what to do with the 35% hard cap rule, which is in the zoning ordinance, and we needed more time to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, there being none, we have a motion on the floor to defer action on this to November 26th, is it?
25th.
25th, 2013. Are we ready for a vote?
Okay. I'll take it.
We'll do a roll call on that, right, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. Ms. Berry made the motion, and Mr. Kaylin seconded Ms. Berry, yes?
Mr. Tarter seconded.
Mr. Tarter. Oh, Mr. Tarter, thank you.
Reflex, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaylin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item is deferred. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, will you read it?
The next item, council is TO-13-21, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning to remove assisted living as a byright use in the B1 limited business zoning district and require a conditional use permit approved by city council. And this is before you on second reading.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Let me refer you to our planning director, Mr. Snyder.
Members of city council, this is an item which has been before you for first reading. It has gone to the Planning Commission as well. They also recommended approval of the change, which would remove the byright permission of assisted living from the B1 zone. It would become a conditional use permit that would go to city council, similar to how the drive-through ordinance was changed. So we think this is an appropriate kind of change. It would give you final authority over those conditional use applications, and we think that this is a better way for these types of special uses to be handled. So you have some comments as well from the Economic Development Authority Chair. Planning Commission did recommend to go forward with this as written, and so we recommend that you approve it here at second reading.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Berry.
Mr. Snyder, this came up in the work session the other day, but is there a standard description of assisted living? Are we clear about what that means, either jurisdiction to jurisdiction? I just want to be as coherent as we can be on this topic.
I believe we are pretty certain what assisted living is. It's not a full apartment. It's for people who are living with help in their daily routines. It's not nursing care. So I think we have a good handle on it from a zoning perspective, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Berry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Snyder, when you said "we," did you mean the royal "we"? Because I don't. And so if there is descriptive language that is, you know, readily available for the public, I would just like to know what that is. Because, for instance, you just said, "living with some assistance." Well, that could be somebody who has someone come in, you know, three hours a week. I mean, I just want to make certain that we fully understand what is understood, at least well in your mind, about assisted living. So if there's, I mean, you can simply point me to text, and that would be fine, just as long as that text is somewhere so that everyone has a full understanding of what it means.
John, I think we have some language in the zoning ordinance that reflects assisted living. I believe we do have some language in the zoning ordinance elsewhere that does describe assisted living.
Do we have that, or do you want to refer to the?
I could wait, I mean, we got to hold up the show.
Yeah, we're searching for it.
We'll come back to this then.
I don't multitask very well. Okay, 48-2 of the zoning ordinance defines a quote-unquote "assisted living facilities" as a, means a special type of residential institution that provides personal care and support services to people who need help with daily living activities, et cetera. And so it is a defined term.
Thanks very much. Any questions from council at this point? We'll have lots of opportunity to comment later. Entertain a motion on this item?
Move to adopt TO-13-21.
Hit the mic button.
Move to adopt TO-13-21.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Motion's on the table. We'll open this item to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address us on this item? I have no speaker slips. Yes, please come forward, give your name and address.
Robert Logenes, 409 South Virginia Avenue. Just to continue with Ms. Berry's questioning there, when I read the list, I also noticed that there are houses that assist mentally people with mental disabilities. So for me, that would also entail assisted living. So I think that we should probably have a wholesale look at what's on that list and what needs to be moved. I assume you probably did, but when I took a quick glance at that list, I noticed some others that might be categorized as assisted living. So the questioning about the language is imperative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to address us on this item? All right, seeing none, I have no speaker slips. We'll close the public hearing part of the deliberations. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing on this issue from citizens? Okay, there being none. Yes, Mr. Snyder, City Manager, anything else on the definition issue?
I think the gentleman's reference, there are state rules about group homes that are referenced in the code, and those are state law throughout the state of Virginia, making sure that those kinds of facilities are able to be placed in any locality in the Commonwealth. So I think that may have been what he was referring to.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of council, questions, comments? Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. As you know, I'm the council's liaison to the Economic Development Authority. I was not able to attend the meeting at which DDA discussed this issue. I was home in Tennessee with my parents, but I did want to ask my fellow counselors for their opinions, thoughts, input on the material that the EDA provided to us, specifically the paragraph in their memo written by Mike Novotny, the EDA chair, who said initially, "The EDA considered and failed to adopt a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance as forwarded for review by city council. There was not board consensus to target assisted living only among the many byright uses allowed in B1 zoning. Therefore, in its recommendation, the EDA identified other byright uses along with assisted living to require instead of a special use permit." You know, my mindset is to be, I think, in line with the sentiment expressed in that paragraph. I'm concerned about us appearing to single out assisted living as a use that we specifically don't want to locate in some particular parts of town, and I would, at least as it's currently presented to us, not be able, I think, to support this. I just wonder if anyone else has any thoughts on that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Duncan. Other council members?
My, just now.
Sure, go ahead.
This is an improvement?
My mark.
I think John understands my concern.
Let's reflect.
The point is, we can come back, and we can add to this if we want. I don't think this has to solve every single specific issue that may arise. We have, this has been proposed. It's acceptable to me, as is. If you want to add other, or the EDA would like to add other activities that should be included, then they should go recommend, or the staff can recommend. But I'm prepared to accept this and support it right now.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Tarter?
I agree. I think we should look at these other items as well. I mean, I think the EDA has brought up some good points, and I think we need to constantly revisit our zoning ordinance to make sure it works going forward. And I think there's some good points brought up here, and I would ask that staff take a look at it. What we have before us tonight is something that I can support, but I think we need to continue this process. And so I would ask, Mr. Snyder, that you and the rest of staff take a look at the recommendations in your own, and come back with further refinements of both the B1, the B2, you know, et cetera, because I think they do need additional work and additional refinement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let me just make a couple. I think Councilmember Duncan's comments are well-taken. I think, though, to expand the list tonight without further deliberation would not be a way to go. I think we need to look at each one of these uses as carefully as we have this one, and I don't think the process is really going to end here with this particular use, but we'll look at others, receive a lot of input. I think, secondly, this should be viewed as separate and apart from a particular project that we had briefed on and that we had a presentation on at a work session. This is separate and apart from that. I expressed the view then that I hope that that project would move forward, and I still do, but that's not the issue here. The issue here is a zoning ordinance change. So that's the way I'm kind of looking at it at this point, that we'll look at other potential uses per the EDA's recommendation. It isn't that the EDA opposed removing assisted living as a byright, but they rather suggested including that as well as others in being removed as a byright. And the important thing to keep in mind is, we can still get these projects, but it gives the council a better ability to negotiate on how they fit into our commercial areas that we know are so important to the economic welfare of the city. So that's the way I'm kind of reading it. Okay. If there be no other comments, any other questions?
Can I just ask one more question? You reminded me of a good point to clarify. Does this, that we're considering tonight, apply to, the EDA, the language again recommends that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment should not apply to any pending application at the time of approval, or applications filed within six months prior to the date of the approval? How does this square up against that?
This would apply, I believe, and the ordinance would take effect, John, I think there's a certain time period that these ordinances take effect after council action.
Well, typically, unless there's a different time period provided, they take effect, and the city clerk can also speak to this, they take effect like 12:01 a.m., the day after, no, okay, that's why I wanted to bring her into the conversation. When do they take effect, Madam Clerk?
Ten days.
Unless specified in the ordinance that it takes effect immediately, it's 10 days.
10 days, okay.
10 days.
So...
But it would apply following that timeframe to this project.
It would apply to any pending proposal, including the one that's before us?
No, my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but there are no byright proposals before us. There is a special exception proposal, which the council is working on and moving forward.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thanks. Councilmember Kaylin?
Since Vice Mayor mentioned you're willing to support the project, we'd like to support it, I just ask, you know, when it finally comes up, that the project be reviewed not solely on its desirability because of its, the nature of taking care of assisted living, but the firm that is doing it is a for-profit firm, and that the city taxpayers have to be represented to make sure that the city is getting is certainly equal to what that same firm has been willing to provide for other jurisdictions, so that that not be lost in the consideration of whether this project should be approved or not if it goes forward.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's answers and dialogue on this. I am going to go ahead and vote against it, just because I would like for the record to reflect that, you know, we've had a conversation, that there's some support for the project that, describe it as you will, is out there. But, you know, going forward, I fully expect that this will set a constructive foundation for consideration of that proposal, and Mr. Kaylin's points are well-taken, obviously. It has to stand on its own economic bottom. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Refresh my recollection, Mr. City Manager, was this particular ordinance signed off on by the Planning Commission? Did they take a look at it?
Yes, it has been.
It was, and they provided the council with a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. Okay, thanks much. Okay, any other discussion on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please? We do have a motion on the table, don't we? Yeah.
Yes, we do. Mr. Kaylin and Ms. Berry, on TO-13-21.
Can't remember.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Ms. Berry?
I can remember the previous one, by the fact of the time. Okay, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
No.
Mr. Kaylin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Pass this 4 to 1.
Okay, thanks very much, Madam Clerk. Will you read the next item on the agenda? By the way, that item passed, what, 4 to 1?
Right, let's crack.
Yep, thanks. Next item on the agenda?
Yes, the next item on the agenda, TO-13-22, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning to require a 20-foot front yard setback for commercial zoned properties on Broad Street and Washington Street. And this is, again, before you on second reading.
Thanks. Mr. City Manager?
Again, I'd refer to Mr. Snyder.
Members of council, this ordinance was proposed to provide a greater setback than the present 14 feet that's required of byright projects on Washington and Broad Streets. the present 14 feet that's required of by right projects on Washington and Broad Streets. You will recall, we have been asking and trying to require 20 feet as a standard for new buildings. We are putting that in our small area plans for these two most important streets in the city, and so we think this is an appropriate ordinance to recommend you to approve. I did want to mention that the planning commission did support this. They had some questions as to the ability to provide for council and planning commission flexibility that would let those groups provide waivers or reductions in certain cases as a part of their purview, as opposed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who typically would hear variance. And so that has been distributed to you with some blue language, if you will, on top of a, of a page for your consideration. It is something I believe the city attorney has said is feasible to be added, but this would allow reduction or waiver by planning commission as part of a site plan review, by city council as part of a special exception. Again, the thought being there that with a broad view of a project going through those groups, that they would be an appropriate group to say yea or nay. Certainly, you'd want a high standard for making any change from the 20 feet, and it would not be something done capriciously or arbitrarily, but there might be instances where it would be appropriate. And so that was their concern, was having that flexibility with the commission and the council, as opposed to having someone possibly go to the BZA for relief. We therefore recommend this to you, and it's your option, the inclusion of that language to the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Kaylin?
So what happens if the BZA and the planning commission don't agree?
Well, I think if you have a legislative remedy such as this, it would not be able to be taken to the BZA, because the commission and the council would have authority, at least that's my view of these types of things. The BZA would not be involved if you give the commission and yourselves the authority to provide this kind of waiver.
Thank you. I entertain a motion. Sure, Councilmember Tarter?
Unless you want to do it.
I tell you, before I make a motion, I think this language may need to be finessed a little bit, and so I, sorry, it would just take a moment, but I would have a question or two for staff. The second portion of the language says, "Distance shall be measured from the face of the curb," and then is there something else, like to the closest point from the face of the building, or what's the next part of that? Isn't there a second half to that?
That's existing language, and that does go to the building. That's the intent of that, is to the building itself.
But to the closest point, or the narrowest point of the building? That's what I would, if we're going to make amendment to this, I think that's appropriate amendment as well.
Okay.
To the point closest, the closest point, or the narrowest point of the face, what? Well, so what we're talking about is, this is 20 feet, but you may have a building that undulates, you know, that's not a straight plane, but it actually has, it comes in, comes out, and so the second sentence, the last sentence here, "Distance shall be measured from the face of the curb to," that part, to me, is sort of hanging. There's not "to," and I think it should be "to the narrowest point in the face of the building," is the language, I guess I would propose.
It might be noted.
Yeah, I think that's, that's not, not a problem, I don't think.
Okay.
It's appropriate clarification.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure, Councilmember Kaylin?
I think that's a good idea, because then otherwise there may be issues, well, if on average it's 20 feet, or something like that, so this would eliminate that, that possibility of getting, entering a discussion again on that. So I support that.
So what I, what I would do is move, I need to find the, the, somebody tell me what it is, TR?
TO-13-22.
Okay, so I move approval of TO-13-22 with the amended language, and would you like me to read it, Madam Clerk, the entire language? Okay. 20 feet for commercially zoned properties, B, M, and T, with frontage on the following streets, Broad Street, Washington Street, all others 14 feet, and then I would add the language, "These requirements may be reduced by the planning commission as part of a site plan review, or by the city council as part of a special exception. Distance shall be measured from the face of the curb to the narrowest point on the face of the building."
I'm sorry, distance shall be measured from?
The face of the curb.
Okay.
That's already there, "to the narrowest point of the face of the building."
Mr. Kaylin is helpfully drawing this for Ms. Berry, and I would like to get in on that, because I'm not visualizing it.
So let me, Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Let me just read back after, "From the face of the curb to the narrowest point of the face of the building." Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to mention, you had asked about the "all others 14 feet," that's the typical by right standard. There are some instances in the T-zone where there are greater setbacks required, so in the staff report, we had removed that little phrase, and so your addition, if you look on page six of the staff report, where it says 11, that particular phrase was excised in your report, the "all others 14 feet." So as you read it, but minus that "all others 14 feet" in the staff report dated the 28th. The concern being some, some areas, there are existing requirements for the T-zone, for example, maybe greater than 20 feet for some uses, so.
The setback is great.
In some, in some instances, some uses on the chart, so we removed, it was an unnecessary number, if you will.
But it's, it's not unnecessary in most uses.
It's, the number is in the chart already for, for each particular zone, so as we talked with the zoning administrator, that particular piece, "all those 14 feet," is not necessary in that chart.
Okay, so that's your language, though. I just, I just parroted what you wrote.
No, exactly, and I just wanted to clarify, because as we wrote this up, that was a remainder.
So you want to delete that?
Yes, that would not stay.
All right, so we're, we're going to delete...
As in the staff report.
Okay, so I'm going off of the sheet you handed out before the hearing started?
Right.
So we're going to delete from my motion the phrase Jim just wanted deleted, "all others 14 feet."
All others 14 feet.
Got it.
Yeah.
So...
And you could see that on page six of your, of your staff report, it's on the back page.
If I could just explain the intent for some who may not understand, the idea is that many buildings don't have a solid plane. Some have places where one part of the building goes forward, other parts go back, and so what I don't want to have is someplace where there's some part of the building that's 20 foot back, but a lot of it isn't. And so it, you meet the 20 feet, and the one little sliver there, when you want to have a little nook for something or the other, but the majority of the building is not there. So we can always, we can always modify it. That's the phrase that got added, maybe modified by the planning commission or city council, so at least we have a starting point, in my opinion, and so we can modify it as needed, but our starting point is at least something that'll give us, I think, a nice wide sidewalk.
Councilmember Berry?
And to that point, Mr. Tarter, when you read the amended language, you removed the language that said "may be waived."
I just think...
Did you, did you mean to do that deliberately?
Yeah, I just think, I mean, I don't know if waived is the right word, I think it's going to be reduced. I'm not sure we're ever going to put a building on the back of the curb on these streets, so I think reduce is probably the most appropriate word. I don't really dead set against it, but sometimes if you, if you want to use three words, one will do, I'm not sure the point of that.
Thanks. Any other questions? Councilmember Duncan?
Just one, I think I'm beginning to understand now, it's, so it's really to the nearest point of the building. I mean, the point of the building nearest the curb, okay, because when I hear narrowest, I think nearest, but nearest is, okay, this...
Do you use nearest if that's clear? I don't have a problem using nearest, but I think...
As long as you, that's fine, okay, this is fine, thanks.
Okay, thanks very much. Now, Councilmember Tarter, you made a motion, is that right?
Yes.
Which was to do what?
To approve TO...
I'm just, so we have it, so we have it on the right?
Okay, so I moved to approve TO-13-22 with the amendment that would read, 20 feet for commercially zoned properties, B, comma, M, T, with frontage on the following streets, Broad Street and Washington Street. Next sentence, "These requirements may be reduced by the planning commission as part of a site plan review, or by city council as part of a special exception. Distance shall be measured from the face of the curb to the narrowest point of the face of the building."
Okay, thanks very much.
And just, just to clarify, Mr. Tarter?
The amendatory language goes where in the ordinance?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to rely on staff to let us know where it goes.
We'll be in that note 11.
Section, it's, it's paragraph 11.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Paragraph 11, I think it's starting at line 109.
Yeah, we usually go by line numbers, so what line number is it?
Yeah, I just went by this.
That's fine, that's cool.
Paragraph first, line 109, and paragraph 11.
So you're, you're moving approval of TO-13-22 with the amendment that you're talking about at line 109, or note 11?
Paragraph 11.
Paragraph 11, okay. That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We'll open this item to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address us on this item? I don't have any speaker slips, okay, there being none, the public hearing part of this agenda item is closed. Open it up to members of council, any questions or comments?
I would just like to comment that I think our sidewalks in our downtown areas are critical, and I think this is a real big improvement to allow for walkable downtown, to allow for outdoor seating, to allow for vibrant commerce, and so I'm very supportive.
Thanks much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
On TO-13-22 regarding the 20-foot setback, Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaylin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. That item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we're now under resolutions and first readings of ordinances. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
The next item is TO-13-27, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, Article 5, supplementary regulations, Division 1, generally, to add Section 48-869, mobile food service.
Mr. Foster, would it be appropriate to hold a public hearing and discussion of these two items that relate to mobile food carts?
You can certainly hold one, one hearing. I think it's important that there be, as is laid out, I think, on the agenda, that there be two separate motions, but you can't have one hearing, yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
I'll be happy to. The next item to include in the public hea, the next item to include in the public hearing is TO-13-28, ordinance to amend Chapter 15 fees, Article 1, in general, to add Section 15-2, mobile food service fees.
Thanks very much, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder, and members of council. We've had a work session discussion on this draft ordinance, and what we'd like to do is present just a summary of changes since that work session discussion. We've incorporated council comments and in addition, comments that we heard from throughout the community, in the business community. Just by way of introduction, Nancy Vincent has convened a group together that's to take up the question of allowing mobile food vendors in the city. Currently, they are not allowed on a permanent basis, and she convened a group that had Falls Church Chamber of Commerce representation, representation from the business community, as well as staff members, to put together this draft ordinance. And so let me turn it over to Nancy, just to hit some of the, the changes that we've made to the ordinance since the council work session.
Good evening, council. In response to the comments that the study group received from, from council members, from boards and commissions, and from the general public, the, the ordinance that you see in front of you was, has been proposed. The, the changes are that the mobile, mobile food vending is allowed in the business and commercial districts of the city, that will not be allowed in residential districts, with the exception of basically the ice cream trucks that can stop for five minutes, so that, that would, that's an exception that's listed in there. The units may not occupy a public right of way, and that is sidewalks and city streets. The, the vendor must have the written permission of the property owner where the, where the mobile food service unit will be parked, and that will basically be a parking lot or a construction site. And an occupancy, occupancy permit must be obtained, and that the operations will be limited to three hours per day, per location. And then also, the, the ordinance does allow for exceptions for city-sponsored events. This ordinance is not meant to cover nonprofit events, other civic events, and it gives some leeway to the city manager to, for petitions to be made, and for these, these exceptions to be made.
Hey, thank you very much. Any member of council have any questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Duncan?
The bike trail question I asked at the last meeting, is the bike trail area included as a permitted or non-permitted area?
The bike trail itself is, is not in the zoning here. I think we talked about the, is it the American Legion?
Right, like the Legion Hall, adjacent to, I'm sorry, I should say, land adjacent to the bike trail.
Since the American Legion could, could host a, some, an event there, but it would not be a regular, ongoing, everyday kind of a event, but they could hold, they could host an event there.
Okay, and if a food, private food vendor wanted to set up in some space that was near the bike trail, it would fall under the strictures of this language, isn't that right?
It would fall, it would fall under this. They would have to have the permission of the property owner, and would have to have, go through zoning and get the zoning permit.
And the process at line 97 that's contemplated, if, I don't know, you know, somebody wants to sell Boy Scout popcorn or Girl Scout cookies, I mean, is there a rule of reason for what constitutes a temporary food unit? Lemonade stand, Tarter's kids are selling lemonade on Memorial Day, they're making good money out there, we need to get a piece of that.
In general, private events, nonprofit events, civic events will not, are not covered by this. The non, the intent of it is not to cover those, those kinds of...
Commercial enterprises, in other words.
Exactly.
That's what we're looking for. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Tarter?
A question or two. We talked about fingerprinting at the work session, the need to fingerprint people who work in mobile food trucks. Did you come up with a determination or recommendation about that?
The, that would be an administrative point, and it's not covered in the ordinance. The, the study group did make a recommendation, and based on the comments received, has recommended that fingerprinting not be, not be required of mobile food service vendors, although the final decision will, again, be an administrative decision.
Also, we discussed at the work session, the amount of health inspections per year. To my recollection, a standalone restaurant got inspected twice a year, whereas a mobile food truck wasn't, was to be inspected once a year, which seems kind of backwards to me. Is that still what's on the table?
We did clarify that with the health department, and they would be doing two inspections per year, so...
Same, same as a standalone restaurant?
Same as a standalone restaurant, and what they would do is they would have the vendors take, take their unit to the health department for one inspection, and then for the second inspection, the inspectors would come out to the site.
Okay, good, good. Let me ask you another question. Can you park your vending truck in your driveway? Maybe this is not for you, but for someone else. If I got a mobile truck and I just want to park it in my driveway, is that permitted?
It isn't, and R-1A and R-1B, you're actually not allowed to park a commercial vehicle.
Okay, so you'd have to find some commercial space to park that on?
Correct.
But you could on, in B-1, for example, if your friend's got a B-1 lot, just drive it on there, and you could park it there?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if I had anything else. I think you covered things, thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other questions or comments at this point from council? Okay, we'll open TO-13-27 and TO-13-28 with public hearing. Any member of the public wish to address us? Okay, seeing none, I have no speaker slips. Madam Clerk, anything in writing? Okay.
Only one you presented before.
The public hearing part of our deliberation on these two ordinances is closed. Members of council, I entertain a motion, first on TO-13-27.
Mr. Vice Mayor? I move to approve TO-13-27 on first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for December 9, 2013, and advertise... for December 9, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Is there a second?
Second, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Second.
Okay, thank you, seconded by Councilmember Carter.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Any further discussion on the part of council? Just very quickly, I think this was a very collaborative process with our business community, including freestanding restaurants, as well as those who would like to add mobile food service, and I want to express my appreciation to everyone involved, the chamber and others, and you, for your staff, for your leadership in this, very collaborative, very positive process so far, so thank you very much. So we've got a motion, it's been made and seconded, no further questions on the part of council? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on TO 13-27?
Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that item passes unanimously, next item to have a roll call is TO 13-28, entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Duncan?
Move to approve TO 13-28 on first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for December 9, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Is there a second?
Second, sure, whatever.
Nope, it's you.
Second.
Okay, is there any council discussion on this one? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on TO 13-28?
Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, TO 13-28 passes unanimously, next item on the agenda, TO 13-26, Madam Clerk, will you read that item?
TO 13-26, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, Section 48-235, principal uses permitted by right, maintain principal use status of water utility, infrastructure subject to sale.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder, this proposed amendment is a housekeeping matter related to the pending sale of the city's water system, subject of course to the referendum that is set for November 5, the change is noted at lines 59 and 60, basically expands the types of entities that may own and operate a water system within the city of Falls Church, and that would therefore allow this water system use to continue forward if the Fairfax County Water Authority's pending purchase of the system goes forward, the specific change has been to broaden the language to also allow for ownership by a public water authority, that's at line 60 of the proposed amendment, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, any questions for the City Attorney? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this item. Mr. Kalin?
Move to adopt TO 13-26, first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for November 25, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Berry seconds. Okay, we open this item to the public, does any member of the public wish to address us on this item? Okay, seeing none, we have no speaker slips on this, Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks very much, any further questions or comments from council? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on this item?
To 13-26, Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that item passes unanimously, next item on the agenda is TR 13-33, Madam Clerk, will you read that item?
TR 13-33, resolution adopting the city of Falls Church bus stop master plan.
Thanks very much, Mr. City Manager.
Vice Mayor Snyder, members of council, council had a good in-depth discussion of this master plan at your last work session, since that time, the planning commission has reviewed the plan, and let me ask Mr. Stoddard if he could just give a brief mention as to the planning commission's disposition of this, of their recommendation, and any other brief comments that he might make, and then answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder and members of council, did go to the planning commission for their endorsement, and they did strongly endorse it, with one minor modification, they wanted to see an option for advertising placed into the shelter, so I did make that modification, as well as a number of other modifications that were mentioned at the work session last week, so advertising into the shelters, making it explicit that the city seal and the little city logo would make their way onto the shelter, preferences for shelters over benches was strengthened, and possibility of allowing developers to handle maintenance of the shelters was added.
Great, thanks very much, any questions or comments for staff from council? Councilmember Kalin?
Regarding the advertising, is there like specification limits, something that designates exactly what type of advertising is permitted, and how much you're going to charge for that?
No, what's put into the master plan is the idea that staff would explore that option, so there's no explicit sort of allowance to put advertising in at this time.
Thank you very much, any other questions or comments?
Just one.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard, could you just give us the top-line number of shelters that we are going to build between now and 2015 if this is executed as planned?
I think it would take into account the number of shelters that the public is building, as well as the private is building, I'm expecting to get three or four shelters out of the private side, and I would expect to get somewhere between a dozen and 15 shelters out of the public side.
Thank you very much, any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll entertain, yeah, Councilmember Carter?
Give me a second, question or two for you, I looked on your map, it looks like there is a stop plan going forward 2016 near the Harris Teeter, is there one on both sides of the street at the Harris Teeter location, or just on the Harris Teeter side?
So Harris Teeter has agreed to provide a shelter on their side, and I think the idea would be for the public to go ahead and put one in on the other side when they do that, so that we would always be installing them in pairs.
So that the plan would be for both sides of the street at that location?
Yes, the plan is for both sides of the streets at all locations, and so I think it would just fall into that general category.
So every place there's an X, it's not that they're staggered at all, they're basically dead across from each other?
Correct.
Do we have any means to get across the street near those places, for example, when you cross Route 7, there are some big gaps, where if you're trying to get on the apartment from this side directly across the street, you may have to walk down 300 yards where you can hit a stoplight or crosswalk, come on over, is there any plan to start adding some crosswalks so people can actually get across the street to use these buses?
So that is one of the things I was worried about, that bus riders are pedestrians, and they do have to cross the street, and so this plan does lay out a methodology for making sure stops get placed next to signal-controlled intersections whenever possible, and so that's part of why the spacing is what it is on East Broad Street, is to put them close to traffic lights on, I'm sorry, on West Broad, on East Broad, there are some long gaps where there are, it's difficult to get across, there's a light at Cherry, but then you've got to go all the way to Washington or to Roosevelt to get another intersection, there were, there was a call in the draft PED Plan for pedestrian crossings at Fairfax Street, and again at Buxton Road, and so I did mark shelters in there, thinking that pedestrian crossings, that was the most feasible place to get them going forward.
I guess I would just say PED Plan or no PED Plan, that I think is part of your kind of bailiwick, I would encourage you to try to find ways to get people safely across the street, because they're probably going to cross anyway?
Right.
And jaywalking across Route 7 is just a bad idea, we discussed at the work session the idea of also having a pilot project, where we try an electronic sign that updates when the next bus is coming, I would encourage you as part of, you know, if we get some seed money, or whatever it is, is that's a really neat concept, I think it would encourage ridership, and I think just like we got the, you know, the EPA designation earlier tonight, kind of being on the cutting edge of mass transportation, I think it's a really good idea for a community such as ours with major thoroughfares going through us, and so I would encourage you to the extent you're able to try to find a way to get us at least one of these electronic signs, and see how it works, and then if it works, let's expand it throughout the city. Finally, I would just say that I think you're doing a great job in, as I guess interim Director of Transportation, so I would just applaud you for all the good work you've done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, we'll entertain a motion on TR 13-33.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move passage of TR 13-33.
Is there a second? Second, Councilmember Kalin, thanks very much, we open this item to the public, does any member of the public wish to address us? Okay, I see no one, Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing? Council, so the public hearing part of this is closed, council, any other questions or comments? I'd just like to make a quick one, I view this as important from a human service standpoint, I can't tell you the number of times that I've seen people sitting on the pavement, standing in the worst kind of weather, and this is a great example of this community trying, trying to deal effectively with that issue and improve the quality of life for folks who may have no choice, secondly, I think it makes this transportation option a better choice for more people, and hopefully in the long term, along with other things we're doing, will reduce congestion and at least bring it under control, as well as providing a really effective transit option for more people, this doesn't do it alone, but at least it's a start in that direction, finally, when you look at these shelters, they're actually an example of public art, and help to link our community together in a very visual way, so to me, this is a win-win-win, and I want to thank everyone involved for this, this effort, any other questions or comments from council? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on TR 13-33?
On TR 13-33, Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks very much, Madam Clerk, that item passes unanimously, next item on the agenda, TR 13-29, Madam Clerk, will you read that, please?
TR 13-29, resolution to adopt the South Washington Street Quarter Small Area Plan, area plan number two, as a guiding document in decision-making for planning, zoning, and development review, capital improvements, city regulations and policies, and included by reference in the city's comprehensive plan.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, we had a good discussion and presentation at our last meeting on this, at that time, we had some comments from Vipus, and subsequently we had a more detailed couple of hour session going over a number of what we thought were very helpful and useful comments and tweaks to the report, those have been made and are included in an attachment showing edits that have been done throughout the, throughout the report, I believe a member of Vipus was here earlier, but at any rate, we found a very useful fine-tuning of the document, and those have been made to the report, so we are, we think we're in a good place to recommend approval of the, of the South Washington Street Plan with those edits, and with any other guidance that the council would like to give us, I think you also may have some testimony tonight from others, but again, we've had thoughtful, good review by, by members of the public, and we have tried to add and tweak the report to reflect those, those changes, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you very much, questions or comments from council for staff? Okay, seeing none. Yes, Councilmember Carter?
I'll make it quick, Mr. Snyder, this is something we discussed earlier, I think we had a discussion earlier tonight about sidewalk widths, I know, I know that, that the sidewalk widths to some extent are covered in the ordinance that we did earlier tonight, but I would like to see sidewalk widths articulated throughout this area, this South District, because it impacts how much FAR people can get, and because we're not an FAR-based zoning ordinance at this time, really pushing your building out as far as you can, as close to the curb as you can, maximizes your value, and so I think as a community, we need to push back and establish our standards of sidewalk widths throughout this district, not just on Broad Street or Washington, but throughout the area, and so I would ask that you could, if you could articulate some street sections and some sidewalk widths as part of this process, so that everyone has a clear idea what they're going to get into when they come in to redevelop a particular site, what...
We have added a graphic which is on the webs, is on the website, an urban design, at the end of the urban design chapter, which shows a rendering with the 20-foot setbacks, the 11-foot lanes, the bulbous, the streets, the street trees, the streetscape, as an illustration of that, of that intended streetscape, so we have, we have articulated that in a graphic, and that was one of the things I think that council specifically mentioned, wanting to see some drawings that show that.
I appreciate that, I think it would be good to not just have the 20-foot section, but a lot of these streets are actually going to be less than 20 feet, right, because they're not on Washington, and they're not on whatever else might be intersecting here broad, I guess, and so I think it would be helpful to have some guidance from staff as to what sidewalk widths and what streetscape is deemed appropriate within this core area. Also, there's a comment from the EDA, which I agree with, about encouraging the opening up of garages at market rates, but nonetheless, to try to encourage shared parking throughout the area, I know this is done in other communities, I work on projects like this where garages are encouraged to be opened up, and it really does take some of the strain off on-street parking, and so I would encourage you as well to try to make that a part of this process, to encourage development, also, maximization of on-street parking, I think is critical for the success of this plan and the success of retail throughout this area, also, I would like to the maximum extent possible to encourage on ground floor on, all frontages on major streets, all major frontages, and that's it, that's what I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would say, did want to mention, we are hoping, planning to have a session November 23 to talk about city center, which we are working on that plan, and as you know, this plan previews some of the ideas for city center, and so as we look at that and look at those streets which go, include many of the streets in the South Washington Street area, we can work on the details of the street sections for those, for example, Maple Avenue, which goes through both of those, and we are looking at having that meeting on Saturday November 23 at the Tax Analyst Building to roll out our draft plan of city center as we continue the small area planning process, so we will be working with Public Works on developing those street sections, some of the streets, for example, are quite wide, some areas of Maple, for example, we have four lanes of traffic and no on-street parking, so we'll have to work to, on how those rights of ways should be handled, appreciate your comments, and we'll try to incorporate street sections as we, as we do these plans.
Thank you, any other questions or comments at this point? We'll entertain a motion on TR 13-29.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to adopt TR 13-29.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Carter, thanks very much, I did have one question, the map showed MRR, but this does not give any automatic rights for residential development in the business district, does it?
No, it does not.
Because that's currently a council approval special exception.
That's correct.
Okay, so it does not...
And we are looking as the ZOAC recommendations to remove the technical MRR district out of the zoning code, it does not, this is the one that hasn't been used, but it's on the books, and that's something we...
Residential development in this area would be done by special exception?
Absolutely, yes.
In commercial areas?
Okay, very good, thanks very much, we'll open this item to the public, does any member
of the public wish to address us, and I know Robert Young has submitted a speaker slip.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, my name is Robert Young, my address is 608 Timber Lane, you all have heard what I have to say about this, so I won't repeat it, I would just simply urge you to adopt this plan, which I think is an excellent one, and hopefully adopt it tonight, and I would further strongly urge that council work with staff to begin the process of figuring out where we can get the money to do some streetscape on South Washington, which, as you all know, is badly needed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young, does any other member of the public wish to address us? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Nikki Graves Henderson, I live at 307 South Maple Avenue, I'm the Executive Director for Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, which, as you know, it will be impacted by all of the projects that are happening in the area, we are in support of the Small Area Development Plan, or redevelopment plan, however, we would like to remind the council and the project, the city staff, to remember the devil is in the details, and there are a number of details that we have brought to the attention of both the developer and the city staff, and they've been very cooperative in resolving some of these issues, but I'd just like to go on record that while we do support the project, we want to make sure that the details do in... sure that the details do enhance the history of the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That comment's very, very well taken. It's one of our most historic areas, and I know that that was treated significantly in the plan. So, thanks very much for that. You have our commitment moving forward. Thanks. Okay, does any other member of the public wish to address us on this item? Okay, there being none. Madam Clerk, anything in writing?
No, sir.
Thanks. So, we close a public hearing on this. Comments, questions from council members? Councilmember Berry?
Mr. Snyder, in looking at the Vipus comments, it says here on page 80, "It is odd to see library proposed where a new commercial development was just opened with good occupancy and commercial success." I'm confused about that. Regrettably, I don't have the plan in front of me.
Well, we discussed that there was no plan for the library to be moved. I think some misconceptions were dealt with as we worked through the comments with Vipus.
So, this is a misconception that the library was going to be moved?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
One of the major items, I would say, is we did, there was discussion about the area along the Falls Church and whether that should go from to B3 or to OD, and our recommendation has been modified to say it should go to OD. That's, you know, that's ultimately an action the council would have to take, but there was, there was kind of an either-or choice there, whether it should all go to B3 or all go to OD. And we talked about that with Vipus at some length, falling on the notion that that area needed to be treated sensitively, and therefore, the OD approach would be the best one. So, that's one of the more substantive plan changes, clarifications was made in our discussions with them.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
There are comments from Vipus also referenced a couple of times that Town Center maybe wasn't the best thing to call, that thing that we were talking about across from the Falls Church, because Town Centers include everything from, you know, strip center parking lots in Reston to genuine Town Center. Where did you land on that?
Well, I think the Town Center label is still a good one. I think we have to remember, this is a smaller site, so we would not have Reston Town Center here, for example.
Okay.
Would be more of a scale that's appropriate to Falls Church and the size of the site. But a coordinated, attractive, well-designed place with unified design and coordination of the various parcels in the design.
Okay.
And a proper relationship with the historic-
That's fine. An earlier version, and perhaps the final version too, described it as Town Center anchored by two moderate-density office and retail buildings and a green pedestrian plaza park, all coordinated and designed to complement the architecture and grounds of the Falls Church. Is that basically where we-
Yes, we're still there, and I think, of course, we'll have to see what the marketplace brings, but-
Sure.
The concept is there, and I think we've had good discussions with the two property owners that joint development would be a good thing for everyone.
Just one other thing. You made reference to Vipus having had someone here earlier. That was true. I think Keith Thurston, who was one of your discussants, just mentioned to me on his way out that, you know, they were grateful for the time that was spent and satisfied with the documents that's been presented to us tonight.
We had a very good discussion with them, and they had some good, detailed comments which were helpful to us as we clarified some of the items in the report, and it was very useful. So, we appreciate their comment and sitting down with us early this past week.
Thanks very much. Any other questions or comments from council? I just have one quick comment. The importance of plans is that they actually get done, and the fact is that we're already starting some critical investments, as the list provided earlier indicates. We've got more to do, as I think Mr. Young has indicated. And I also want to emphasize that this area abuts two of our most significant historic sites in the city of Falls Church, Tanner Hill and the Falls Church itself, and that celebrating that and emphasizing the importance of what happened on both sites and preserving those sites and passing them forward to future generations is absolutely as important as the critical economic development functions that we're also performing with this. So, I want to thank the council for the solid work on this, staff, citizens' input. It's, in my view, a very good product that we're already starting to implement. Any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember-
Just briefly, having had experience in other places with sector plans, as I've mentioned earlier, I want to applaud you, Mr. Snyder, and the rest of the staff for all the work you've done. This is usually a multi-year process in other places with consultants, costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. I understand you and your staff did much, if not all of this, in-house, and so, my hat's off to you. It's a great first step. Parts of this area are underperforming economically, and I think this will be a catalyst for some high-quality redevelopment in the area, and plan gives certainty to the community developers and landowners, and I think it's a, it's a great first step, so, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I think we can certify it's a consultant-free product. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kalin, does you have anything else?
Just a quick question. This is a multi-year process. This could take five, 10, 15, 20, maybe more years to come to fruition. Your experience in Arlington during the reign, let's call it the reign of various planning directors and councils and supervisors, how much do they vary from the original intent? Do they morph tremendously, or do they more or less follow the design that was originally envisioned?
Well, I think in Arlington, the initial sector plans, which were done by the county staff, have continued to guide the future of those areas in the Rosso-Boston corridor. There have been subsequent refinements, some of them done by consultants and updates, but I think the basic concepts were laid out in the original sector plans, and those really rule. There have been refinements and updates to those plans. It might take five, 10, 15 years, depending, some of them greater, but you go back to the original documents, the basic concepts are there for Courthouse, Clarion, Virginia Square, Boston, and Roslin. And that's what we have tried to emulate here, is a broad vision that will provide long-term guidance with appropriate tweaking as things move forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just have a slight amendment to my own comment a few minutes ago. I neglected to mention the EB Henderson House is a critical historic resource for the city as well, so, thanks a lot. Any other questions? Okay, there being none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on this item.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Berry. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
That item passes unanimously. Thanks to everyone for great work. Next item on the agenda, TO 13-29. Mr. City Attorney?
TO 13-29, ordinance to adjust the boundary line of the city of Falls Church with Fairfax County to annex and incorporate 13 parcels and other land into the city, and to adopt a voluntary settlement agreement with Fairfax County.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is, again, another housekeeping matter required as part of the overall process for the saleable water system to Fairfax Water. Specifically, this is an ordinance to adjust the boundary line as part of the boundary line adjustment that the city council is familiar with. This is required before the three-judge court can take final action and adopt an order approving the boundary adjustment. And again, this is contingent upon the referendum passing on November 5th. With that, I certainly can answer any questions if you have some.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Attorney? All right, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 13-29 on first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for November 12, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's been duly made and seconded.
Seconded by-
Seconded by-
Mr. Charter?
Made by Councilmember Berry. Motion seconded by Councilmember Kalin.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments for the City Attorney? Yes, Mr. Duncan?
Just one. At one of the meetings we went to, I can't remember which one, there was a question raised about whether visually this boundary adjustment could be rendered in a very clear way. Do we feel that what we are showing on our website now really enables people to tell, particularly in the triangle area, what's in, what's out?
Yes, I think that the maps and aerials that are on the website do clearly show what's coming in and what is staying out. Certainly, I will, again, check with our communications head and see if there's anything additional that can be done, but I think that right now, it's pretty clear.
And I would just note, I think that's the only comment we've received along those lines, and I did speak with the person who raised that point, and with one point of clarification, I think they understood it.
Okay, thanks very much. We'll open this item to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address us on this item? Okay, seeing none. Do we have anything in writing, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Thanks very much. We'll close the public hearing on this item. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, there being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on TO 13-29 on first reading?
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thanks very much. Next item on the agenda, consent items. Mr. City Manager, could you quickly summarize the consent items?
There are three items on the consent calendar plus appointments. The first is authorization for the city manager to award a contract for up to $450,000 to the Fort Meyer Construction Corporation for the Broad and Pennsylvania intersection improvements. This is the installation of a traffic signal on Broad Street at the Pennsylvania Avenue intersection, plus sidewalk improvements right around that intersection. This is being paid for through a combination of developer proffers from the Broadway, the Spectrum, and from the Byron, as well as a federal grant, and then finally, some VDOT revenue-sharing funds to cover the expected roughly $400,000 cost, and we have added a small contingency in the requested authorization. Second is an authorization for the city manager to amend each of the contracts with their existing contractors who do facility maintenance and improvements for the city, and those three are Integrity Construction Services, Colossal Contractors Incorporated, and Tito Contractors Incorporated. Request is for contract authorization for $350,000 each for those contractors to carry out the CIP projects and operating budget projects that the council has already approved. And then, the third item is authorization for the city manager to amend a contract with ALS of North Carolina for a closed-loop traffic signal management system in an amount up to $575,000. In short, this contract would install fiber optic cable, as well as wireless communication devices, so that our traffic signals can be monitored and operated centrally at City Hall. This will allow us to be able to repair them when they go down, which does happen frequently. Instead of calling the contractor and having them come in and close down Atlanta traffic, et cetera, et cetera, we'd be able to do this from City Hall in real time. And then, secondly, while we're doing those improvements that will be paid for out of a congestion mitigation and air quality grant, we will also do city network IT improvements to connect the library to City Hall and to connect the Aurora House to City Hall, and then add a third leg to the Maryfield hub of our fiber optic connectivity, and we'll use general fund, local funds for that that's been approved in the city's capital improvements program. So, the total requested contract authorization to ALS is $575,000.
Thank you. Does council have any questions about any of these items? Councilmember Berry?
Berry.
Yes, I remember. Took me a while.
What's her name? It really, it's not a question, because I'm perfectly happy to move the consent items forward, but I just echo Mr. Kalin's remarks, something that this council and future councils ought to think about in terms of internal controls. Because, you know, just a quick back of the envelope, this is about $1.5 million, which, of course, the city manager is perfectly capable of managing, but the idea that on these sorts of contracts, that there's just, every now and again, there's some sort of, you know, another set of eyes, or third-party review, or, you know, just because I sincerely doubt we're going to dive into the details, nor should we, but I think it is absolutely prudent for council to just be reminded of its fiscal responsibility, and that is every now and again, to, you know, to suggest either internal audit or third-party review of contracts such as this.
Thank you. Any other questions about any of these items?
Just one, if I may.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. In the same vein, or related perhaps, the closed-loop signal system, does this give us the flexibility to do advanced green turns, or do something with the traffic on Broad Street at particular intersections at particular times a day, or am I not talking about the same thing that-
You are, you're talking about exactly what this is about. The reason this is paid for by a congestion mitigation and air quality grant is that by modeling it correctly, you can set the signal times appropriately for rush hour eastbound and westbound. It's a tricky thing to do in the city of Falls Church, because our rush hours are not really pronounced as to which direction most of the traffic is going. By contrast, in Alexandria, it is very clear, all the traffic is heading north in the morning, and all of it is heading south in the evening. In Falls Church, it's more of a 60/40 split, but still, we can work with our traffic signal timing. The idea is to move traffic through the city as efficiently as possible.
Thank you. I just, for another time, I think this would be an opportunity for public understanding and input. You do hear a good bit about this, traffic congestion, you know, some of the numbers that I asked for a year or so ago did not show that the volume of traffic is that much greater than it was some years ago, but there's a perception that there is more congestion. So, you know, when you make changes in the signals, you know, there's a matter of crossing Broad and going through on Broad. Anyway, there's a lot of things at play there, and I would just encourage us to include folks in whatever process we're using, so that they understand what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just have one to emphasize that, again, I think this is an example where we are addressing our infrastructure issues, and particularly, a number of traffic issues. The specific light at Pennsylvania and Broad is being addressed by this, and this closed-loop traffic signal management system, I think, has huge potential for us in the future. So, I'm also glad that Northern Virginia Transportation Authority has, you know, we've worked this out regionally, so we do get some significant funds for transportation. So, in any event, that's all I had. Anybody have anything else? Yes, Councilmember Berry?
A quick question or observation. The closed-loop system, does that have emergency response implications as well? You know, should there be some significant emergency, I don't even want to think about what it might be, that this system can reroute traffic expediently through the city in some sort of exit strategy? I mean, is there EMS?
We are part of the National Capital Region's evacuation plan, planning process, and so Falls Church is included in that. In terms of the specific capacity here-
As well as the comments that Mr. Schills made, that we can control centrally from here instead of having to go out to the individual signals, we can also remote access in, and so if there's an off-hour incident and the police identify that we need to detour or adjust even locally, we can do it, and certainly regionally, then we collaborate, and we could control the signals better, which will also address Mr. Duncan's point, because if things get off-cycle and sequencing, we can also remotely correct it without losing the time for staff to come in.
Great, thanks very much. So, we've discussed the first three items. The fourth item, just so people are aware, is the term correction for Lynda Nebergall on the Girls Home Advisory Board. Thank her very much for her service. All right, any other questions on the consent items? Now, Mr. City Attorney, we can vote all these at one time, the consent calendar?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of all four consent items.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move approval of the, all four items on consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Charter. Madam Clerk, call the roll on these items, please.
On all the consent items, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Okay, thanks very much, council, for that, and thanks to staff. Next item on the agenda, because we had no items removed from consent, next item on the agenda is other business. Do we have other business? Nope. Okay, business not on the agenda? Anything? No. Councilmember comments? Any councilmember comments? Yes, Councilmember Kalin?
I have a couple. One is something you mentioned, Dave, earlier in the evening, about looking into the issue of parking meters. It was thrown out as a bye-and-bye- by-and-by, but maybe, uh, as time permits, going forward into the next, uh, council, uh, you continue to press that, that point, because we need, uh, we need to get all the parking and, and maximize the efficiency of the spaces that we have, so please, I ask you not to let that, uh, let that go. Uh, I see you grimacing, Wyatt, but I'm sorry about that. Uh, the others are a couple of, uh, smaller items. One is a, a letter that was sent out by, uh, the, the city manager to the school bar, board requesting some answers to questions. I think all the council members saw that. Uh, I would also like to inform, my, the members here, that, uh, to the best that I can understand that policy, which is not particularly clear, uh, it could add two to three cents to the tax rate every year, uh, on a, on a permanent basis, each year, and added an organic growth of two to three percent, the way it's drafted. So I think it's in this council's, uh, interest to get an answer, so we understand, uh, precisely how that fund balance, uh, this new fund balance is going to, uh, operate. Uh, this is a serious issue. It could mean, uh, transfers of up to $800,000, $900,000 a year. So, uh, this is something that we should definitely pursue, and hopefully, we can get an answer at a reasonable period, uh, actually, as soon as possible, so at least the council can be aware of what, what they can expect going forward in the next budget process. And I think we have some meeting with the school board in November, correct? So that would be very useful to have an answer to that, uh, so that there's a, a complete picture of the types of expenditures that the city can, eh, expect to face. The other issue is, uh, should the, uh, referendum pass, we have the issue of the use of the proceeds. There's been a lively conversation, uh, certainly online regarding that, and I think it would also be very useful if we could at least start that discussion, and hopefully even come to, um, uh, closure on, if not the use of the proceeds, but the mechanisms of where to invest it while we're deciding, uh, how to best use it. So, uh, I'd like to proceed and like to make, see Wyatt if we couldn't get some movement on, uh, that issue as well. Now, question two, I don't know if it's you, Dave, or to John. Who makes the decision on the use of the proceeds? How is that, that decision determined? Is it a council, you, is it, what, how does it take place?
That would be a council decision.
The normal process of, of legislation?
Well, I mean, you know, certainly we can discuss in further detail offline, I mean, but, you know, just-
I'm just curious.
I mean, my, um, off the, you know, off the cuff response, and I can provide further detail, um, is that, you know, certainly one way would be to do it through the normal budget process. Uh, if that's what, again, what council as a body wanted to do, another way to handle it would be, um, as has been discussed, if, uh, it's not going to be part of the normal budget process, there would be, need to be a formal, uh, resolution adopted by council to put it to some other use. But again, the key thing is, it would need to be, uh, public vote, a majority vote by city council, uh, with, uh, public input.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just one housekeeping thing before I forget. Ms. Berry is chair of the appointments committee. Uh, I think this is the last time council meets for a little bit. Um, I wonder if I could ask, if we're gonna have an appointments committee meeting in November at the scheduled time, that it begin just a little later, because there's a cable television board meeting that I would actually like to go and stay at for a while. I usually have to pick up and run, so it's, if we schedule interviews, maybe we could start them at like eight, or, that's a little later than usual, but, well, okay, I just want to put that marker out there. Uh, the second thing is, uh, this is the last council meeting before, uh, our historic, uh, referendum vote, and I just wanted to note that for the record, and thank the staff, uh, for, I think, what's been a very commendable job to communicate the particulars of the referendum, um, at multiple meetings and through multiple platforms, um, and to thank civic groups that have sponsored many meetings, forums, and discussions at which staff has dutifully attended. Um, the last of SED was Wednesday night, uh, where CBC and the Dems and Republicans and Legion, uh, convened at, uh, Greater Cauldron for a very good substantive discussion, I thought. Um, and, uh, at that, uh, meeting, uh, a group, uh, was present, uh, which is called, uh, Citizens for a Sustainable City. Just want to make the public aware of that. Uh, you can look it up on the internet to get more information. I think you're seeing the fruits of their labors popping up in yards and handbills, uh, around town now. Um, so, um, since we will not meet again until after the vote is held, uh, I do want to thank everyone who's really, uh, done a great job, I think, in form of the public. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Kaylin?
Uh, should it pass, John, uh, you have plans to celebrate, or is there any special activity that you're going to engage in afterwards?
Well, I, you know, I think that if it does pass, uh, it should be a, you know, a city-wide celebration, and certainly a staff-wide celebration. Um, yeah, personally, uh, my way of celebrating, I might get on my bike and, uh, go out for a long ride. That would be a good celebration.
I'll join him. Oh, wait a second, I can't do that, so.
Thanks much. Um, I, I would, um, just echo the appreciation of everyone who's, um, sought to inform the public, uh, on the, the water system, uh, sale issue, and, um, and part of going forward will be the work on, uh, the, the best way to, to handle the finances, so I hope, uh, Councilmember Kaylin can be involved in that even after he leaves council, so, thanks much. Um, okay, any other comments, questions from council? Um, we have no approval of minutes, is that right, Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll entertain a motion when we adjourn.
Moved to adjourn.
Second? Is there a second? Excuse me.
Second.
Too anxious there. Is there a second?
There is a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you all very much.